I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 4th, 2022 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
Current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, welcome back. Administrator's report, please.
Thank you. And it's great to be back. The last time I saw most of you, it was at the Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting, and Parker's born the next day unexpectedly. So, thank you all for your prayers and support for Parker over the last couple of months. So, we're glad that he's home, and your prayers are greatly appreciated. And then, moving on, if you recall, a few months ago FEMA published the preliminary flood insurance maps, those firm maps. The appeals process for affected citizens for those maps starts tomorrow, October 5th, and it's a 90-day process, and it'll end on January 3rd. During the appeal period, owners or leases of land who feel that they're affected by those firm maps adversely affected will have a chance to appeal during that process to either the city or the NRD. And the appeals must provide information indicating that the information from FEMA is scientifically or technically incorrect. And we'll be posting information on our website and social media so we can get that information out for those affected citizens. And then, congratulations to Papillion Manor for celebrating their 50th anniversary today. They had a wonderful ribbon cutting to celebrate, and we are fortunate to have had such a strong community partner for so many years. And then, just an FYI, in case you hear about a high level of emergency response activity, tomorrow night, starting at 6:00 PM, Sarpy County law enforcement agencies, along with the Papillion Fire Department, will be conducting a full-scale law enforcement exercise activity in and around La Vista. So, you may hear something from some citizens, try to, you know, help calm them down. And then, it's time for Fall Cleanup Days. It's October 17th to 23rd, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, just like always. And also, like always, it's open to Papillion residents and Papillion water customers. They just need to make sure they show proof or their utility bill. And then, finally, it's time to start setting up for Winter Wonderland. Hard to believe. So, you'll be seeing Tony's guys out there getting that all ready to go. So, thank you to those guys. Thanks, Mayor Block.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Klug. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. Next, D1, Ordinance 1979, "An ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code Section 117-4 and 117-11, to revise the number of fireworks sales licenses, to amend fireworks regulations, and to provide for an effective date." Is there a Councilman to introduce?
Uh...
Introduced by Councilman Jaworski. E1, Ordinance 1976, "An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multifamily Residential for the property legally described as attractive land located in the south half of the northwest quarter of Section 1, excluding any right-of-way dedication needed for South 72nd Street, South 71st Street, and Ponderosa Drive, all located in Township 13 North, Range 12 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast of South 72nd Street and Shram Road, the applicant's Papio Park LLC, 72 Park Place." It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Welcome. State your name and address for the record.
Evening. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group. Let's see here. 10-909-MILVALDER-ROAD, Suite 100. How am I... Is that all the way out? Must be. I'll do my best to kind of work through this here. Oman, Nebraska, 68154. Here on behalf of the applicant, this is 72 Place South. It's too bad I couldn't get that to go bigger. So, this is about a 70-acre parcel. It's roughly located in the southeast corner of 72nd and Ponderosa. To the north is 72 Place. So, this will be roughly a third and fourth phase of 72 Place parcel that's currently being built and developed right now. The second phase of this project is being routed through the city for the rest of the residential, and so it's a little bit behind this. We're asking for a change of zone from Agricultural to R4. It's 155 single-family homes, mostly on the eastern portion of the project, and then 23 acres of multifamily of some sort. They're still working through that, whether that's apartments, townhomes, missing middle. They're still working through that type of product. They are putting some of that product in the north, and so you'll see some of that coming forward. And, you know, that market's still being tested, and so they're working through that as well. There's apartments to the north as well. If you kind of remember, this was a site that kind of got caught in the middle of the school parcel, still a lemon and lemon piece, and 66th Street that must go from Cape Hart north all the way to 370, which is off the map there. And that alignment is not quite yet finalized with the county. And then, our piece was in the middle of that. And so, we worked a lot with staff because at the time you were going through your master plan update as well, this park location, size, kind of programming, all those things were very, very much in its infancy, and I don't know that there's been a whole lot more detail on that. And so, with staff's help, and then the school's help, is on board with the configuration of this project. It allowed them to increase the amount of property they got to use to fit all their future facilities on that site based on them kind of going along with us with this road alignment, rawhide right through here. And they've agreeing to that as well. They're well aware of it. They have been involved in the process. We're working with the school to procure right-of-way, and they'll participate in the paving and the dedication of that right-of-way as we go to that portion of the project. So, we feel like it's been a really large effort between staff, the school district, the county, and our development team to kind of figure out what is the best location of 66th Street, how that looks. We've agreed to pay our fair share of 66th Street even though we're not, it's not on our property. We've agreed to pay our fair share of the park even though it's not on our property. We feel like it's a great location for that park, and we think it'll be great amenity. So, kind of how we ended up where we're at. This is a fairly straightforward project. The grade isn't the greatest, so you see the super creative street layout. And we're under conditional approval. We were approved in Plan Commission in August, I believe unanimously. We follow underneath your master plan, your comprehensive plan. We follow all your zoning subdivision regulations, conformance of all that. And like I said, we'll continue to coordinate with staff and the school and Sarpy County on this project as it moves forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Appreciate that. Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay. I want to follow up on your comment about the multifamily unit here, that you haven't decided what it's going to be.
Correct.
Okay. Let me ask maybe the staff or somebody. Will we have a say in what that will be? If we approve the zoning today, are we done with it?
Mr. Gibbons.
Yes. The proposed zoning for those two lots for the is R4 zoning, and our code requires that if it's over 15 acres, which it is, it would require a special use permit, so it would go back to Plan and Commission, then City Council for approval.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I'll just tell you right now, if you want to fill that 15-plus acres with apartments, I will be voting against it. No.
You will or won't be?
I will be voting against it.
You will be. Okay.
Right there.
Making sure. Based on...
Yeah. But based on my, what I think is best for Papillion, we need the diversity of housing that we see, for example, in the Tower District. We've seen in a couple other places. I understand the vacancy rates of apartments are really, you know, really high at the moment. And I think in part, that's because people can't find anyplace else to live. And so, I want the, I think the city of Papillion will be better off if you take a place like this and include some townhome cottages, et cetera. I'm very pleased with what they did in the Tower District, and I'd love to see something similar in this area, too.
So, a combination of apartments with townhomes and cottages on 15 or 20 acres, you'd be in favor of. Is that correct?
That's the direction I'd like to see you go.
Okay.
Rather than just, you know, if you wanted to go all townhomes and cottages, I think that would be okay, too.
Okay.
Just if you want to go all apartments, nah, I can't buy into that.
Well, I'm not aware of current plans on that piece currently now. That's why it's one big lot. We recognize we got to come back and work through with staff and Plan Commission and Council, and we're happy to do that. So...
I just want, just want you and your developer to know where I stand right now.
I will pass the message on.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Jason, that little yellow sliver that's south of the school site?
Right here.
That whole stretch.
I'm sorry, south.
Yep.
Oh, here. Yeah.
All of it. Is that owned by the developer?
It is currently owned by the school.
Oh, it's owned by the school?
It's owned by the school. Correct. So, everything south of this line, that's all school property.
Okay.
So, we, which we have, is not a part of the application, nor is part of, you know, we're not part of that in general.
Okay. Well, because it shows it, future single family. That's why I was wondering...
I think it needs to, you got to transition from those acreage lots to that road, and then to a school. So, I think, you know, the purpose of this exhibit was to show how this is, how we got to where we're at.
Okay.
But they have no plans that I'm aware of in stone of what they're going to do.
Okay.
They're just want to make sure that if they were to do everything they wanted to do, that they had room to do that, and that's how we worked with them. That's how we ended up with this road alignment that comes through.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents or any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1977, "An ordinance to approve a purchase agreement with a manual for the sale of city property located near 620 West Lincoln Street." It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. F1, Resolution R220158. It's a public hearing and a vote. "A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the south half of the northwest quarter, Section 1, excluding any right-of-way dedication needed for South 72nd Street, South 71st, and Ponderosa Drive, all located in Township 13 North, Range 12 East, 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast of 72nd Street and Shram Road." Same topic as we, as Mr. Thielen just presented on, so I'll carry your comments over, but if you want to say anything else. It is a public hearing. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220158? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Klug. Any discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. Item F2, Ordinance 1972, "An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to CC Community Commercial, MU Mixed Use, R4 Multifamily Residential, R4 PUD2 Multifamily Residential Planned Unit Development Specific, and RE Residential Estates for the property legally described, part of Tax Lot 7, Section 12, Township 13 North, Range 12 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of South 72nd Street and Cape Hart Road. The applicant is Gene Graves, Oakleaf. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1972?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. Related item, F3, Resolution R220164, "A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot 7, Section 12, Township 13 North, Range 12 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of South 72nd Street and Cape Hart Road, the applicant's Gene Graves, Oakleaf. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220164?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. F4, Related Item, Resolution R220165, also a public hearing and a vote. "A resolution to approve the Oakleaf subdivision agreement." It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name's Joe Foley, 14503 Grover Street in Omaha, 68144. We're the engineers for the project. I've been working on this for a little while. The developers here, too, Gene Graves, and I just want to thank the city and the staff and everything for working through this on everything with this over these past few years. We're pretty happy with the end result, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Are there any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220165? Motion by Councilman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. Also related, F5, Resolution R220166, "A resolution to approve the Oakleaf Water Connection Agreement." Motion to approve Resolution R220166? Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. Also related, F6, Resolution R220167, "A public hearing and a vote. "A resolution to approve the Oakleaf Planned Unit Development Agreement." It's also a public hearing. I'll open it. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Motion to approve Resolution R220167? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. F7, Resolution R220169, "A resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the Shadow Lake II subdivision agreement." Motion to approve Resolution R220169? Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. F8, Resolution R220170, "A resolution to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Ashbury Farm subdivision agreement." Motion to approve Resolution R220170? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
AAs zero nAs.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. I don't think any committees met the last two weeks. Any comments from the floor?
Mayor, we have some youngsters.
Yes, we do. So, with that being said, if they're new students, assuming Mr. Keller probably sent you, you got to come up and introduce yourself and let us know what you're doing here. And we, and everybody's got to, all the students have got to do it because we'll wait.
Do I just say my name, or do I need just my name? I'm Jay Sanders. I'm from Papio South. I'm in Mr. Keller's class, as you said. We're here on a city council, like we go to a, like a council meeting of like some kind, and we had to record like different things, like what you guys say, and what you guys go over, and like how you guys pass motions and all that good stuff. So, that's what we're here for.
If you guys have any questions afterwards of what we did, some of us will hang around, so feel free.
I've got a question for you right now. Okay, now, this must be the first council meeting after school has started, right?
Yeah. Probably. I don't think so.
Well, typically, what happens is, we sit and we wait until the semester, end of the semester, and then we have a room full of students because nobody came throughout the semester. But you guys are here right off the bat. Why are you here so early?
We talked about it as a group. We wanted to come. There was one other friend that was going to come with us, but he went, like he went home sick today. So, we were all just planning to come together, and we wanted to get ahead of the game and stuff like that, so we didn't really worry about it later.
Okay. So, when you run into all those other people who put it off to the end of the semester, you're going to tell them, oh, no, this is the way to do it, right?
Exactly.
Okay. High five to you. Okay.
Welcome.
I'm John Fiedler. We did like a simulation what we were supposed to do. I'm kind of blanking out. I'm pretty, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure we're supposed to like state our address and stuff. I don't know if I'm supposed to do that as well.
Public hearings, public hearings, we, I do require that, but just comments here, no?
Yeah, just kind of what Jay said. We're here to just see how things are run, see discussions made and points made, and just see like arguments on both sides, whether we agreed, disagreed. Just see how things are run. That's kind of it.
Welcome. Thank you.
So, we're disappointed you, like we didn't really have the audience.
You could have come a couple of meetings ago.
I mean, we'll work with what we did.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Idol. I'm here on the same public meeting project as them, but very interested.
Welcome.
I'm Jacob Plasman. I'm also here for the same project as them.
Thanks. Welcome.
So, are these all juniors or seniors?
We're all juniors.
You're all juniors. Very good. And which one of these is going to run for our public office?
I don't know.
Which one of you is on speaking couch?
There's a couple serious looks there. So, welcome. Thanks. Any other public, any comments from the floor? Welcome.
Hello again. Mike Urban, 926 South Madison. It's encouraging to see young people here. There's no more powerful thing you can do as a citizen than stand right here at this podium and ask the city leadership questions or even challenge them. You're off to a good start. So, good job, guys. Back to speak again, my five minutes, property maintenance codes. I know we're pushing that forward. I know this isn't being slow-walked, but it's been 10 months since introduced. We really needed to do some things. The primary problem with maintenance in, at least in my neighborhood, is rentals. Another, since I started up here last, another rental two blocks away, 824 South Jackson, is now a rental, taking that property off the market. As Mr. Mumgarth said, diversity of housing. All the houses that are $250,000 or less are being snapped up by investors, and they're not taking care of them. I live next door to one, a notorious landlord, as you all know, and I'm discouraged that for probably a mortgage on that home, probably wouldn't have been $1,400 even at 6% or 7% with a 10% down, and they're charging $1,800 for rent. So, that's just money going out of our city and making it unaffordable for people that really do want to live in here in a beautiful town. And we really do. Mayor, I read your interview today in the World Herald, and this is a beautiful town. It is an awesome town, and we need to keep the small-town feel. And we're approaching, in my neighborhood, based on the GIS map, Sarpy County assessor's website, we're approaching 30% rentals in my neighborhood. I think that is way too high for there not to be some type of management or review of that, or like they do in Omaha, where they can go in the rentals every so often and look at the interior of those homes. 924 South Madison, the house next door to me finally got a roof. I've shared pictures with both of my council members and code enforcement. They had to take off 40% of the decking on that. There were rotted-out truss. The roofer stood there for a good 10 minutes looking at all of the, because I can see it from my house, looking over across the property, all the raccoon poop and everything else that's in that, all the scat, the bat droppings, everything else that's been in that roof. Again, they didn't mitigate any of that. They just roofed over it, fixed a few truss and roofed over it, and that, that's really bad. This landlord is so bad that 946 South Washington, you drive by it every day. Thousands of people drive by this property every single day on 84th Street, and now that's been red-tagged. So, I requested through the city today, public records request, and this is the reason why that is been, and this is pretty similar to the property that I live next door to. Here's the problems. Wet basement. Basement's still wet from flooding, mold along the bottom and of the bedrooms and main room in the basement. HVAC, no permit or furnace, for the furnace, AC, or water heater. Exposed wiring, damaged ductwork, no shut-off valves, evidence of multiple roof leaks, improper outdoor storage of trash and weeds and grass higher than 12 inches. And the, my understanding is, is the tenant let the city in, and that's the only way they got in to condemn this property, and I'm sure all of his properties are similar. When they tore off the roof next door to me, that house just wasn't neglected for a couple of years. It's been neglected for decades, decades, and it, something needs to be done. So, I would encourage, as part of the review for the property maintenance codes, is that we also take a look at how we can manage the rental business in Papillion. So, that is 90% of the problems in my neighborhood. The last thought is, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the animal house that was here with over 500 animals in it, over on Kilkenny and Terry Hills. That house recently sold. That house sold for $82,000. Somebody didn't buy a house. They bought the lot, and they're going to tear down that house. Why? Wasn't something done before a house would have to be in that kind of condition and have to be torn down and not repaired to get it to that state where city had no control over it, code enforcement didn't have any teeth in the regulations or anything else? That is a really sad statement for our city, that it would, that it would get to that where that property has to be torn down and can only be sold for the land. So, those are my thoughts. Please continue to work forward. You guys have always been great. I appreciate everybody on the city council. There's, as I've said before, there's always a resolution. We can always work together, and we can solve these problems, and I think for everyone's benefit. So, please, please continue to work hard. I appreciate everything that you guys do. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Mr. Sunday.
Mike, I've got a question.
Sure.
This person who owns the property that's next door to you, is he the same person that owns the property at 946 South Washington?
Correct. And I'll state his name. It's Donald Gotchok. That's who owns eight properties in Papillion, and they're all in disrepair like this.
Okay.
So, for public record.
Next question is, have you had an opportunity to check with leaders of other municipalities around this area to see if his properties in those communities are similar to ours?
He owns 112 properties in Sarpy County. He owns eight in Sarpy County, 10 in Douglas, from what I understand. The rest are in Cass and Flatsmith area. I've driven by in every one of those communities. I've looked at his properties. They'll look like this. They're all neglected in some state in fashion. They're all neglected. So, he's taken advantage of it, and while his tenants suffer, the tenants are suffering next door, next door to me where they put the roof on. One tenant's had some health challenges, and it may be from that house. I don't know. He, they're in a spot right now where they can't move. They can't let the city go in because if the city goes in that house, they'll probably condemn this property, and they'll be kicked out. And they're marginal. Both of them are unemployed. One of them just graduated with a degree in criminal justice, and one of them's recovering from a health issue. And so, they're being held hostage in a big fashion. That's really unfair. That's unfair to those tenants. They're good people. As I said in January 4 meeting, when we announced the property maintenance codes review, that if anybody in my neighborhood was sick or anything else, that I would come over and help them. And that's just what I did this week. I spent two hours over at that property trimming trees, trimming the trees so you could see the number on the house in case the ambulance had to come by and pick this gentleman up from another health scare. They couldn't even see the house number on it. It was so overgrown. They put a new roof on, and there's branches dragging on the roof. I helped the tenant cut that down. I raked the whole backyard that hadn't been raked for a decade. Part of that's the tenant's fault, but a lot of it's the landlord's fault just for not keeping up on it and making sure that it's done. And so, yes, that's the issue. He's, he is, I won't go any further than what I think he is, but let me just say that he's very, he's a very neglectful landlord of the worst type. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
Just for everybody who's wondering about the property maintenance code, that is with the committee, they're actively working on it. Staff's been doing some work, and they should be meeting again soon to look at the next revision of the work. So, momentum hasn't been lost on that. So, thank you very much. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Ms. Klug.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to many people in the city. The Papillion La Vista South marching band held a huge competition here a week and a half ago or so. We had well over 3,000, 4,000 people go through there, right between those two numbers, and we had a police officer stop in multiple times just to make sure things were going okay, and we had some public officials coming through just to observe and see what was going on. Unfortunately, we had the opportunity to call an ambulance, and they were highly professional and took care of things in a very polite and discreet way because the lady was highly embarrassed. But I just want to say thank you to the city for loaning us a few supplies from cones and golf carts and that. It makes a huge difference what these bands can do and what they can gain educationally from the guest speakers they bring in based off of what they make. So, thank you to the city for helping those school kids out.
Appreciate that. Mr. Stube.
Yeah. So, Amber mentioned the cleanup days, and I'm making the assumption that the shredding event is still part of the cleanup days, will occur that Saturday morning, I believe.
I will confirm.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr.... Mr.?
Mr. Gaines.
I just wanted to quickly thank Phil for the hard work that you've been doing while Amber's been gone. So, and I also want to say welcome back. So.
Appreciate that. Any other council comments? Just a couple things from the last couple of weeks. Went to Rumsey Station's second graders and talked to them. Second grade, they start learning about rights, responsibilities, laws, branches of government, levels of government rights, responsibilities, taxes, elections. Second graders are learning a lot, and had some good discussion with them. Grows Sarpy Board Meeting, met, I think, at the last council meeting, we had the presentation, and Andrew Rainbolt, the executive director, had announced that he's moving to Mills County, so the board will be going through a selection process there. Then Waste Water Agency did meet. Nothing major this month. If you're not aware, two meetings ago, the contract was actually signed to do the construction of segments three and four, which is the area that'll serve the drainage area south of Shadow Lake. So Papillion will get that immediate benefit of that project. And then had a couple of ribbon cuttings, Core Bank at 114th and 370, and then Papillion Manor, with their 50th anniversary, was a, was a great celebration. Again, just a reminder, if anybody is impacted by the new FEMA maps, Amber mentioned, the appeals process begins tomorrow, and it's a fairly short process. So I want to jump on that as well. Any other council comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
E A zero N S.
We're adjourned.